It's Monday, August 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And tonight, we are in regular session. Our first item of business is establishing a quorum, and all members of council are present. Next item of business is communications. And do council members have any communications that they want to share? It's been a quiet week. The previous two sessions were very busy, but tonight's been quiet. We'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Our auditor is not here tonight, nor is our law director, so we will turn directly to Mayor Patterson.
So it gives me all kinds of time.
No. I knew you'd ask.
I will try to be brief. I have a few things. I shared these with council last, the last council regular session, and that being the 2020 return on investment report for the city of Athens from the Buckeye Hills Regional Council. Hopefully, council had a chance to look at that. But the bottom line for the city of Athens is that for every dollar that we pay in our dues to be a member of Buckeye Hills, we had a $236.81 return on investment per dollar, which is outstanding. And that amounts to a total of $790,120 in funding coming in from various grants and projects that Buckeye Hills helped the city of Athens with. So again, I just wanted to remind council of that. I also gave you the Athens County report. I share this with council with a ounce of caution, but the document was released for the estimated potential settlement amounts from the opiate settlements. And for the city of Athens, it could be anywhere from $98,000 plus, almost $99,000, to $141,000 that the city would be receiving. Again, that's predicated upon several things yet to happen, but I did want to get that out there. And that would be monies available for treatment. That's part of that settlement agreement. The other three items that I have quickly, council, is that council member Crowell, thank you for updating me on the question that was raised of the vending meter, vending spaces. And I think I gave you a summary, I know I gave you a summary, explaining the fact that within the city, now in the uptown area, we have three zones when it comes to metered parking. The dollar zone, the 75 cent zone, and the 50 cent zone. We do have, I believe it's five spaces that are available on Armory Drive or Armory Avenue, next to the Armory, next to, in between the Armory and the Masonic Temple. And those are in the 50 cent zone, but again, it's very few. The lion's share of the meter, of the vending spaces that are available for vendors are in the dollar zone, the $1 parking meter zone. And therefore, the question that was being raised is, why did it go from $150 a month to $200 a month? And if you do the math on that, it's still lower than even a year's worth of the 75 cent zone rate, if you were to think of it that way. So, member Crowell, thank you for alerting that issue to me. Captain Harvey did meet with the Athens City School District principals and superintendents to kind of talk through the bus routes and where the buses are going to deploy. I know that Captain Harvey did come up with some, several suggestions for changes that they had in their plan. Thankfully, they took that to heart, and they will make some adjustments. But if council would like to see the comments that Captain Harvey brought forward as they pertained to Central Avenue, the Athens Middle School, West State, East Elementary, and Morrison Gordon School. Yeah, so I can share that with council in terms of what the content is in that email with the conversation that they had. He did share that with Andy Stone, Director Stone, as well. The last item for council is I received a letter from John Spafoorth, and it was about the arts in our community and requesting that I look into working with the Ohio Arts Council and applying for funding, but also Mr. Spafoorth was asking that we possibly form a new arts commission here in the city of Athens. We do have the Athens Metropolitan Arts Commission. It does exist and has for many years. And during my tenure, anyway, there have been a number of art projects, everything ranging from the Art Bench overlooking the Hope Preserve, or whatever you want to call it, by Little Fish, to the Athens Photographic Project art that is on the side of the parking garage and a multitude of murals, a poet laureate that rose to become the Ohio State poet laureate, and Carrie Gunther Seymour, of course. So there have been a number of things, but I certainly will look into this and see what funding opportunities are out there for public art in the public spaces. That's it.
Great. And you have tonight joining us, Mr. Brent Lane and Mr. Jason Jolly.
And Jason's here. Jason, I didn't recognize you behind that mask, my friend.
I was wearing my face covered up.
And council members have received a draft of a report and then also received a PowerPoint presentation. So welcome to council, and we're ready.
So, thank you. My name is Jason Jolly, and I'm a faculty member at the Buonivice School. And I'm going to try to take my glasses off so I can see with them not fogging up. We received some money through the U.S. Economic Development Administration to assist communities in the Appalachian region who had seen considerable distress due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we reached out to Mayor Patterson because we knew that the city of Athens and Athens County had seen considerable challenges due to declining student enrollments as a result of COVID, fewer students being on campus, et cetera. Mayor Patterson introduced us to the COVID Roundtable that he put together, and we spoke about our ability to help the community with some of these challenges. And out of that emerged a few projects. And one of them was assisting Athens County, as well as the city of Athens, in examining what we were calling a remote working scorecard. And our intent was to look at, what's the prospect for attracting, attracting remote workers to relocate to non-metropolitan cities like Athens, as well as non-metropolitan counties like Athens County, and develop a scorecard about some of these attraction factors. This project really went well beyond that by the time we got to this point. And we have really moved beyond just a scorecard to a white paper, looking at what are some of the economic development impacts of remote work? What are some of the factors that can attract remote workers to a community? And how might a community capitalize on those for economic development opportunities? My colleague Brent Lane, who is an executive in residence with us here at the Buonivice School, really led this effort. So I'm going to turn it over to him and let him go through the presentation. We'll try to keep it at 10 minutes, but please feel free to interrupt us if you get to, you know, one, two minutes remaining and we can pick up the pace. Happy to distribute an electronic copy of this to anyone who would like to see it. I have some cards, and I also brought a few hard copies. So, thank you.
Second chance to keep it to about five minutes now. But whatever time you've got, thank you very much for it. I think only in academia is it a big deal to move from a scorecard to a white paper. But I think there are some significant findings from the work that we've done so far. Let me, one caveat, the use of the term Athens is in part both a reference to the county or the city, somewhat interchangeably. Most of the data sources we rely on are going to be Athens County-based. So I know there may be some confusion. We just use the term somewhat broadly and hope you, hope you can help us wind our way through the use of that. First of all, let's start with the findings of this work. Most important thing to recognize is that remote work, say unlike working from home, which is a different form of activity, remote work is much more akin to commuting, the way we would do physically in a car or some other mode, but doing it digitally. So you have an employer in one location that you used to go to their physical location. You no longer do so. You work from other locations remotely. So that's what we focused on. The digital commuting, remote work, the term we'll use from now on, was a trend before COVID that was increasing and was accelerated during COVID, in many ways codified and broadened. Post-COVID, if we ever get there, we expect to see a decline in remote work, but not a return to what it was before. There will continue to be more remote working going on in the U.S. and the world economy than there was before. And that's significant because remote working decouples where we live from where we work. And that enables people who want to live somewhere other than near where they work to choose their preferences. And for a lot of Americans, that preference is a non-metro location. Latest since this data came out, a lot of talk about continued urbanization in the U.S. In most cases, that's compulsory. But a number of our fellow citizens would prefer to live in non-metro areas such as you have here in Athens. Athens, by our preliminary assessment, is well positioned for people seeking those sort of locations. We'll go into a number of those factors. However, the economic impacts of what has been the most visible form of remote work, support, payment of incentives to get people to move to your area, is actually rather minimal. Good news is, there are a number of other benefits that provide substantial economic benefits to your community, to your citizens, from remote work that we got into, which is why, as Jason pointed out, the study broadened quite a bit. Summation, what we found is that emphasizing the remote work benefits to your current residents will meet or exceed the kind of benefits you would expect to see from recruiting non-residents to move here as remote workers. So it doesn't exclude that strategy, but that is a small part of what the opportunity is. Let me substantiate a few things that I said in the findings. First of all, one of the sources of information is the Gallup poll. The Gallup poll, Gallup has been polling people about where they live versus where they'd like to live. Before COVID, they found that about 39% of Americans who did not live in a non-metro area would like to move there if they were able to do so. They weren't able to do so because of their place of employment. That was only strengthened during COVID. They updated that poll just late last year and found that the share of Americans who would prefer a non-metro, which means a small town or rural, or a small city for that matter, is 48% of the population, much higher than the actual distribution of people who live in those areas today. Again, that is a preference that is largely thwarted by the necessity of commuting to your place of work. We looked at, we looked at a number of sources of information on what is still a fairly new field, which is remote work, to identify what are the factors that attract remote workers? And what we found, there were two characteristic factors. The ones that were required and the ones that were highly desired, so the prerequisites and the motivations. Here we looked, we ended up with 10 primary factors. The top three are in blue. Internet access, like any other form of essential infrastructure, is a requirement to support and attract remote work. Attainable housing, particularly the ability to purchase one's first home, is highly desired. It is probably the major motivation for people seeking to relocate. They want to buy a home, and that's particularly true for a younger generation of people who are renting today in areas where they cannot afford to buy. That's a primary motivation. Childcare is a requirement. Now, we've handled childcare somewhat extemporaneously during the pandemic, and many people made a lot of sacrifices, a lot of people dropped out of the workforce. That will have to be codified in ways that support childcare needs of remote workers. Remote work is not a substitute for childcare. The other factors on here are also quite important, and they can be quite important to different segments. Cost of living, generally, people are looking to move out of a high-cost area into a lower-cost area. Remote work spaces, working, remote working, as I said, is not the same as working from home. We all are remote working in one way or another at a variety of spaces. So your remote working infrastructure, the physical part, is the formal structured areas like co-working spaces and informal areas. Your kitchen table, coffee shops, we've all experienced it. That's a very important part of the infrastructure for remote work. Attractions like outdoor recreation are important, particularly to some of the younger generation of remote workers, who are probably the largest part of the remote working population. For similar reasons, professional education, the ability to advance professionally while staying in place is key to this workforce. They're attracted to a community, they want to remain in that community, but they are still quite often early in their professional trajectory. They need professional education source. Many cases, the work, working remotely does not obviate the need to show up at the office. And the further away your office is, the more important travel access is, particularly air travel. Political alignment showed up quite interesting, particularly in younger generation of remote workers. They want to live where they feel comfortable from a political standpoint, regardless of what that orientation is. And lastly is financial incentives. And I say lastly because that's been the first thing people have been talking about because of some of the prominent examples you've heard of. Truth is, we don't know whether financial incentives for remote workers, one, do they work? Two, are they successful? Three, do they matter when they succeed? So we tried to address that in our work in this project. You want to know how Athens stands? And I'm going to say that this applies primarily to Athens County. The city certainly comes into it as well. But to the extent we were able to do this assessment, and I did it from an outside perspective, you found that there are a lot of things that make Athens County and city a favorable location for remote work. Certainly, your attainable housing. Now granted, these are also assessments that outsiders would be making of your community. You may find homes in this area sometimes terribly expensive, but from an external perspective, you're well below the median cost on housing and on cost of living and on childcare. You have tremendous outdoor recreation assets, and you have wonderful professional education resources right here in the county. Those are all strong positives for you, things that are far less certain. I'm sure you had a lot of discussions about internet access. We have a lot of them in our business and in our own home about who has good access. You never get the same answer twice. Reality is whoever moves here from elsewhere is probably moving from a more urbanized area to here. And whatever your level of internet access today may be less than, or perceived to be less than what they're used to. So I would say that's still an uncertain quality in terms of its attractiveness. Remote work spaces, I think it's something that you've had a substantial amount of today, but not as much as you would need. And I say that might be because we haven't had the opportunity to do a thorough inventory of what sort of remote spaces exist today. I can, I can certainly encourage you that more would be better, and I think particularly on the formalized side of things. Remote working or co-working spaces have proved particularly persuasive for the younger cohort of remote workers. Those who aren't already accustomed to working in an office space and are relieved not having to go there are still looking for opportunities where they can, can co-work and interact with others. Political alignment, I think, is completely uncertain. And obviously, you could change your political affinity anywhere within any given county. Certainly, that's true here in Athens. The two that might be negatives, one that I would say is probably certainly a negative, is air travel. Yes, we could go to Columbus, and we can in one flight, or perhaps two, get anywhere in the world. But still got to get to Columbus, and some people will perceive that as a negative. For others, it will be irrelevant, perhaps not a concern of theirs. And the last is financial incentives. And I put it last because we frankly don't know whether financial incentives work, much less are they necessary, and even less are they desirable. So let's speak about financial incentives for a minute, what we did learn. A lot of the discussion about remote work has been prompted by high-profile examples of programs. Certainly, West Virginia is one that shaped a lot of people's thinking on this question. So we looked at 10 programs that have at least some operating experience. What we found is that in general, they're expensive and they're small. They get a lot of press. Look in the right-hand column here. This is what they're budgeted to achieve. Most of them double-digit at most. If they succeed, this is what they're aspiring to attract. And we looked at the economic impact of success. If these programs are successful, because of the nature of the limited economic returns from attracting an outside worker to live in your community, you don't get the kind of benefits of a company moving here. You don't get new jobs, the jobs are already occupied. You don't get new supplier purchasing, you don't get new building construction, which you get is the benefit of their spending of their own income, which is a rather small part in terms of economic impact. So you're seeing, even in success of recruiting outside workers to move here, rather small Fortunately, when we, when we recognize that the limited impact of attracting and particularly incenting remote workers, we look for other opportunities where remote work would benefit Athens. And there are a number of them, and I want to illustrate a few ways in which that's true. First of all, you have a workforce in Athens County of about people who live here who are employed, some 22,000 people. Half of them outcommute to another county. The main reason people are resistant to go back to work in the office, in addition to health concerns, is we hate commuting. And commuting is a big reality for a lot of your citizens. Remote work helps limit commuting requirements. And that, that has two things. One, it continues to import income that they earn outside of your county into Athens, but it reduces the amount of spending they do outside of Athens. A lot of what we spend is near where we work. When we work outside of Athens, we spend outside of Athens, retail leakage is a result. But the main benefit is if, to the extent Athens citizens digitally commute rather than physically commute, to the extent they remote work, it's a tremendous savings in cost, literal dollars, perhaps more importantly, in time, and is also reducing all of the negative unsustainable travel behaviors and environmental effects that travel and highway and vehicle travel requires. The average commuter, outcommuter in Athens County commutes 50 miles a day. If they replace that with digital commuting as a remote worker, they'll save $2,500 a year. More importantly, they'll save 250 hours a year. That's six weeks, work weeks. That's the great savings you can provide your citizens through remote work, to folks who are already here. The ability to remote work also expands the world of employers for whom you might work. No longer limited to who's nearby or who's within a commuting distance, in theory, you could work for anyone in the world. What that does is greatly broadens employment opportunities, will enable people who want to live here to continue to live here. Graduates from your school, whether it's high school or college, could choose to live here while still entering the professional work environment. People who want to grow their career from their entry job to the next level in their trajectory could remain here by working remotely. It's also going to greatly increase your labor force participation because it is more accessible to new entrants. And for people who have difficulty either by schedule or transportation requirements, no limit in their working. But remote work is a tremendous benefit for your current citizens. The result of all these things is it's going to increase upward mobility in Athens. Upward mobility, financial upward mobility is a concern nationally. It's been in decline. The more employment opportunities people have, the greater the opportunity for upward mobility without having to leave. The result's going to be a more diversified economy, a richer skill base in your population. And I think one of the most important things is it's going to help you retain the critical element of your prime working age population. The population, they don't just start work, they start jobs, they start families, they start businesses. Retaining that population through remote work by allowing people to develop professionally without having to leave this community, I think helps sustain the community's vitality long-term. So what we have is a portfolio of economic options to capitalize on remote work. It's not just using incentives. It's allowing people who are already remote working to continue to do so and helping those who are not currently remote working perhaps convert their work life into one that incorporates more remote work. It's also going to provide a basis for people who want to invest in their skills, job training, professional education, to do so without having to leave the community. They can upscale and remain in this community, finding employment opportunities through remote work. And that's also going to help you retain them, some of those graduates from the schools, people who otherwise would be forced to depart.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
You wanted me to give you the 15-minute queue. It's been 15 minutes.
We're very close.
You've been speaking, so yeah. So I want to allow enough time.
In terms of attracting outside remote workers, you have, you have a real advantage. That's repatriating people who already came from Athens in one way or another and would like to return and will be enabled to do so by the abilities of remote work. And the last is incentivize. I could close really with this taxonomy. It just points out that most of the strategies available to you are birds in hand. There are people who are already here who would benefit from remote working activity through the support in your economic development efforts. So in conclusion, our assessment is that you'd be better off enabling remote work by both current residents and new residents who choose to come to the area than emphasizing or focusing primarily on incentive-based programs to attract outside workers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we'll open it up for questions from council members. Any? Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Mr. Lane and Mr. Jolly, for being here tonight and presenting. Your full report's very comprehensive. I really appreciate the work that you all have done, as I mentioned in an email today, with this mixture of Athens, city, and county. I would love the commissioners to, you know, see this information as well and have a lot of collaboration on moving forward on initiatives around this remote work. Quite obviously, the disparity between the city and the county, for example, in internet access is something that is, you know, just strikes me as a real, and there are others obviously as well, but I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember McCary.
I should echo the appreciation. I graduated from Ohio University 14 years ago, and many of the alumni I graduated with indicate that they are envious of my having retained work here and life. They want to move back. So I'm curious, in your research, did you find great examples of the kind of support people need when they're thinking about, how do I find a home? How do I find that remote job? Have you come across some good strategies for helping them feel they don't have to make all those huge life decisions without support?
No.
Okay.
This is fresh ground. I'll make one point that I think is important about Athens and Ohio in general. The Census Bureau does an interesting assessment of where people leave from, where they move to, where they remain. You are not a magnet state, but you are a very sticky state. People prefer to remain in Ohio, which suggested to me that those who've been compelled to leave for one reason or another would welcome the opportunity to return. And I think remote work is the way to do that.
That's great. Well, to the extent that there are ways that also, Councilmember Grace is chair of the Athens Affordable Housing Commission. And so maybe there are some ways in which we can figure out a partnership. I noticed that one of the programs offered, one of the lower-scale ones offered free or reduced income or reduced loan payments for a first-time house purchase, so something like that. And I certainly identify with and think that that's wonderful to hear the news of, you know, retaining Athens graduates, reconnecting them, repatriating them. I think that's very important, something for us to try and do. So we thank you for your efforts on this, and thank you for sharing the information.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Okay, we'll move on now to ordinances for third reading. Our first one is 8721. This is an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street on Sunday, August 22nd, 2021, for Ohio University's Involvement Fair and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 8721.
Second.
This is our third reading, and we've discussed it in committee, and certainly we discussed it in the first reading. Just to remind everyone, not just from the title, but the pertinent section, allow me to read it, then we can vote. The mayor and service safety director shall implement the following. A, close to vehicular traffic Union Street in the city of Athens from court to college on Sunday, August 22nd, 2021, from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM for Ohio University Involvement Fair. B, ban parking on Union Street from court to college in the city of Athens on Sunday, August 22nd, 2021, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM for said event. C, vending spaces will remain open and accessible for city-licensed vendors throughout the event.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. And second, do we have any questions or comments? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8821 is an ordinance amending ordinance 3721, authorizing the 2021 Street Paving and Repairs Project Number 337, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 8821. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 8821.
Second.
Again, this was discussed in committee and read for the first time, had discussion then. There are several sections which refers to the various amendment to the budget, mainly increases, in order to do the paving and repairs, which are absolutely necessary for the city, both for health and safety and just for convenience. I like driving over smooth streets and not bumpy ones.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. So, we have a motion and second for approval of our 2021 Street Paving and Repairs. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8921 is an ordinance accepting a Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Critical Grant Award to the Athens City Fire Department, and this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 8921.
Second.
Thank you. And this ordinance is very straightforward, but I will read it because I think it's great information to remind everyone of. Whereas during the most recent grant cycle, the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation awarded 120 grants to public safety organizations nationwide totaling nearly 2.5 million. And whereas this grant award will be used to purchase critical lifesaving equipment for our community, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, the city of Athens hereby accepts a Critical Grant Award from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation in the amount of $15,790 for the purchase of eight sets of water rescue personal protective equipment, which will be used to ensure greater lifesaving capabilities for our first responders in our community. In Section 2, the city of Athens expresses its appreciation to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for this grant.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Yes, yes, Councilmember Reisner.
I just want to make clear that in accepting or getting permission to accept this grant, we are not making an appropriation at this time for the purchase of anything. This is just simply bringing the money in, later we will appropriate with a separate ordinance. Is that correct?
It's my understanding that the, it has, we receive the equipment as the grant because I believe they applied for this specific equipment, and I believe from reading communications from our fire chief that the, this is the amount, but once we accept it, we receive the equipment. Is that?
I think that changed.
Oh, did that change?
And now we're getting the money.
Okay. So, do, will we have to do an appropriation for the purchase?
At some point, yes.
Okay. Uh-huh. I think, yes. So, there have been multiple paths explored, apparently, and yeah, so we will need to make the appropriation for the equipment. But the money is grant-funded, so it's still good news.
But the money's there. It's.
It will.
The money will be awarded as soon as we, as soon as we approve the ordinance. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9121 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into contract for the construction of dugouts for fields number 1 and 2 at the West State Park, project number 341, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 9121.
Second.
Thank you. And this is the ordinance that basically does what the title says. It authorizes the service safety director to enter into a contract for the construction of dugouts for two of the fields out at the West State Ballpark, and the director is authorized to expend up to $65,000 for this project.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Yes, any questions or comments?
I'm just in a questioning mood tonight. Okay. The way I understand it is we're going to appropriate 65,000, up to $65,000 for the type of dugouts that we've, pictures were sent or a link was sent from the service safety director, which to me looks like they're tents, okay? I'm not trying to put anything down. I know this type of material is used in construction. I think there's airports in Abu Dhabi and Riyadh that are built on this type of stuff. But what I'm wanting to clear up in my mind, is this the most cost-effective way to do this as opposed to, I hate to say this, the good old-fashioned cinder block made of wood with a tar roof on top, which I'm sure I could build for about $2,000. I mean, it just seems like, no? Am I wrong?
So, we have the question, let's, and we've heard that, and I think we have some responses. Councilmember Fall, and then if the mayor wants to have some additional information or comments.
Yes. Last time we did bring this up too is that there is concerns about flooding in that area, and so having cinder block is not going to necessarily pass our flooding requirements, our flood-proof requirements. So, that's one reason these flow through, and having cinder blocks and stuff in the flood fields is not very good. That was a concern at the very beginning.
Okay. Mayor Patterson.
Thank you, President Reisner. Councilmember Reisner, we looked at a lot of different options for this. You know, when you look at Field 1 and Field 2, and I would encourage you to go down and take a look at Field 1 and Field 2, the way both Field 1 and Field 2 are oriented is that the viewability of the fields, if you were to have a cinder block building there or structure, it also obstructs the view of parents wanting to watch their kids play. The company that I sent the image to all of council, this is what they do. They make shade sales for baseball fields, for softball fields, whatever, and the most critical thing that's of need on Field 1 and Field 2 forever and a day has been a shaded area for the teams to sit. The design I showed you also provides shade for the scorekeeper who, the current fields down there don't have anything like that. The person is basically sitting in the open air with no overhead shade other than maybe an umbrella that they bring with them or something. The other thing is, as Councilmember Fall just indicated, you know, in a high-water event, it's just going to flow right over and around this as opposed to having any other concrete structure, cinder block structure obstructing it. I think we'd be hard-pressed to see dugouts in today's economy and with the material costs go up for $2,000, so.
Well, the costs are going down now.
Well, they still haven't gone all the way down, nor do I think they're actually going to return to what they were in 2019, but all the same, you know, for the sake of argument. The, in looking at this, and again, providing viewability, floodability, and, you know, a level of shelter for the elements, you know, we feel that this will work just fine having the cantilevered system with the sun, those shade sails over the top of them, which can be removed at the end of each season and stored and, you know, put in storage and then unveiled the next season when softball starts back up again.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Just one.
Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Mayor Patterson, I don't want to put ideas into anybody's mind, but fabric is easier to damage, right, or intentionally or unintentionally than cinder block. Has that been, is taking it down part of one of the reasons why we don't want to leave it up during seasons when there's nobody down there and somebody might come by and decide to damage it, or?
No, no. The plan is that, you know, taking them down will extend the life of these to include, it's not uncommon for Athens to have heavy snow events from time to time, especially in the era of climate change, and to take them down is going to extend their life from not having to sustain the weight of even moderately wet snow, you know, which is going to cause sag and so on and so forth. So, no, to take them down is to preserve the lifespan of the sage shale. But again, you know, my chief concern is how are these things held up if there's a pop fly softball that's flying up and then coming down on them, and the company indicates that they do just fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks for the comments and questions. We'll proceed for devoting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. That's a 6-1 vote. Ordinance 9221 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a dump truck for the Engineering and Public Works Department, and this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 9221.
Second.
Thank you. And this ordinance authorizes our service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder, or to use the city's cooperative purchasing program for the purchase of a dump truck for engineering and public works. And the appropriation is to expend up to 60,000, or the appropriation is to move $60,000 from the unappropriated balance, and then the service safety director is authorized to expend up to $70,747 for the purchase of the dump truck.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any questions or comments? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading, and I believe that first, that this one will need to be suspended. 9321 is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer, and this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Sorry, Member Reisner was talking to me. We are on 09321.
We are.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 09321. In order to do this expeditiously, the auditor's office has asked for this to be pushed through.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 09321.
Second.
This ordinance, actually, this is the third time before council outside of commission, but we did amend it on its first reading to remove an appropriation for the Arts, Parks and Recreation Department. So, this ordinance now covers $150,000 transferred to the general fund for our Big Belly Containers and Garbage shortfall, $400 to the general fund for purchase of a treasurer scanner, and $5,000 to the Recreation Fund to plant trees at the West Straight Street Park and in the Pocket Park lot in Oakmont. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 9321. Any comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for first reading, and 9621 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Section 9.11.10 face coverings in public spaces, and declaring this ordinance an emergency measure. This is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for this ordinance tonight, and thank you. The reason for the suspension is that I believe that it is critical that we put this in place as soon as possible.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 9621.
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance, I'll go ahead and read through the whereas's and then just sort of explain how this changes the current masking ordinance that is in place. Whereas on July 27, 2021, the Centers for Disease Control recommended that fully vaccinated people wear a mask in public indoor settings in areas of substantial or high transmission. And whereas on August 10, 2021, the Center for Disease Control reported 34,991,203 cases of COVID-19 in the United States, resulting in over 615,778 deaths. And whereas on August 9, 2021, transmission in Athens reached the level of substantial transmission, and the number of infections and hospitalizations due to COVID complications are increasing locally and statewide. And whereas on August 10, 2021, the Athens City County Health Department issued a universal indoor mask alert. So, to go into the changes that are put in place by this ordinance, the most significant one is that vaccinated or unvaccinated people in public spaces need to wear a mask. The, so, a short while ago, we removed the requirement for vaccinated individuals. We are putting that back in place and asking that everyone, just to be as safe as we possibly can, resume wearing a mask if you're in a public space, even if you have been vaccinated. And the other change that was made, because I am trying to be as mindful as possible of what the research tells us, and the people that have a good handle on that are at the CDC, we're removing the requirement to mask when waiting outside to enter a space. So, the requirements are for when people are inside in public spaces. So, that's the portion that is removed from our existing ordinance is when people are outside waiting to enter the place of business or waiting to enter a city building. Now, I would certainly encourage anyone who is waiting in line and there are people around them, whether you're inside or outside, it's a good idea to wear a mask. This Delta variant is highly, highly contagious and can be spread with just a few moments of interaction or contact with someone who is contagious, and so my personal recommendation would be if you're around people in a public space, to wear a mask. But it's, following the guidelines that the CDC has laid out, they're specifying masking indoor in public spaces for vaccinated individuals.
Okay. And you are putting, also inserting that this would be in effect until February 28, 2022.
Yes. Or by council action rescinding the ordinance.
All right.
So, yeah, just giving us a little bit more time rather than just until the end of this calendar year.
Right. Okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance, and I'll now open it up for questions or comments amongst council members, administration, or if the public wants to also. So, council members first. Councilmember Fall.
Great, thank you. I would like to point out, we can do this because we have local control. Thank you very much. Because places that you don't have local control, you have a lot more people dying. It's a mask, please wear it. There are people in this area right now who have children who cannot get a vaccination yet. We need all to take care of the kids. Everybody needs to mask more than you even think. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Ziff.
Thank you, President Isley. I just had a, just one question about with some of the wording saying here that while inside a place of business within the areas of the business that are accessible to and intended for the use of the public, how does that apply necessarily to, excuse me, to like in a restaurant if people are sitting at tables? Does that mean that, I mean, would someone's table not be considered like a public space?
The, we're not changing the exemptions that are listed.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And so, there are exemptions still in city code.
Okay.
And just since you brought up restaurants, and there is a difference between spaces that are accessible to and anticipated to be frequented by members of the public, and spaces, for instance, the kitchen or other spaces of a restaurant. And those spaces would be under the authority of the Health Department, and the city council is not stipulating the actions in spaces not open to the public.
So the rule would apply as before, then, am I right, Councilmember Grace, that if somebody is seated at a table?
They're, yeah.
They're best to be masked until they're needing to eat or drink?
Yeah. It is, unless you're eating or drinking in a restaurant, you should keep the mask on.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I just appreciate Member Grace's work on this, and basing this on the, on the science, on the data. This is a public health decision. This is not a decision based on anything but trying to keep everyone safe and healthy. As pointed out, not everyone can get vaccinated, but my point here really is that I highly recommend that you do get vaccinated. So I believe the numbers that I looked at yesterday or early this morning showed about 44% of Athens County residents are vaccinated. So we have, this issue will be ongoing, and masks will be necessary to keep us healthy and to comply with the guidance of the CDC. So I just wanted to reiterate that this is a public health decision. This is about people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Crowell.
Okay. Mayor Patterson.
I, first off, just want to thank Councilmember Grace for working with me on this to get this to move forward. You know, when we look around the Athens community right now, the Athens City School District is going to require face coverings, Ohio University is requiring face coverings when inside. This makes our entire community in alignment with each other. Member Crowell, I applaud what you said. I think if I could paraphrase off what you were saying is, let's get over politicizing a piece of cloth over our faces, as well as the vaccine. Those are our two major fronts in this, this basically war effort that we're in right now to deal with the Delta variant in particular. Get the vaccine and wear a face covering over your face when you're entering into a place of business that is open to the public, because it is the only way we're going to be able to reduce the amount of spread that's coming from the Delta variant. And talking with Dr. Dick Gaskell today, he's certainly seeing an increase in cases here in Athens, in Athens County. We know that we are going to have K through 12 students who are going to be back in the classrooms together. We're going to certainly have Ohio University students and Hocking College students that are going to be back in classes again. And, you know, as I've often said to people, I love the fact that OU students are coming back. We've missed them over the summer. I'm just not a big fan of what they might be bringing back with them. And that holds true with anybody, anybody, when you're out and about. So again, I applaud council for taking this up. I hope that you do vote in the affirmative with suspending the rules on this and getting it in place to where I can sign this and start moving on it tomorrow. We have face masks, cases of them in the front of the city building that I have offered to businesses that need face coverings for people coming in. We've got more of the posters. We'll redouble down our efforts and make sure we get those posters back out to anyone who may have thought, hey, I think we're through this, let's take this poster down. It's time to put those posters back up again, reminding people to cover up when you're entering into a business that's open to the public. I also want to give applause to businesses that have taken an even further step in requiring proof of vaccination before entering into that establishment. And we have several of those businesses here in the city of Athens, because they have been so hard-struck during the pandemic and losing revenue, that they don't want to have that happen again, nor do they want to shut down, being forced to shut down. So thank you, council, for taking this up.
Sure. And do we have any comments or questions from the public? Councilmember Ziff?
Thank you, President Isley. I just wanted to say one thing. As someone who is very entrenched in the service industry in town, most of my friends are in the service industry in town, and I know that this ordinance will make a ton of them feel safer going to work. I know it'll make me feel safer going to work. Everyone I work with will feel safer going to work, and none of us want to close down again. That's awful. That's a huge loss of revenue and jobs, and we don't want to go through that. So, yeah, thank you, Member Grace, for working on this, and Mayor Patterson as well. Much appreciated from myself and probably 80 to 95% of the service industry in town.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. If no other comments or questions, we'll move forward with the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The next one is Ordinance 9721. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, Parking Regulations, Section 7.09.99L, Penalties, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 9721.
Oh, we're on first reading on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we'll be, yeah, just describing them.
Where am I? Okay. Well, it should be a good idea to adopt it, but... Okay. We discussed this in committee, was it last week or the week before? Essentially, what this ordinance is going to do is bill or give the public an appeal process for a citation. Basically, it says, "Any person who wishes to appeal the violation shall visit this Athens City Department within 120 hours of issuance of the initial citation and receive a minor misdemeanor citation into court, providing notice and an opportunity to be heard, which shall serve as an appeals process." So that way, people won't feel that, well, I'm stuck with a ticket, and if I don't pay it, it's bad, and maybe I'm in the right, and I want to argue about this.
Okay.
Have my day in court. Citizen deserves that.
Thank you for the explanation. Do we have any comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to 9821. This is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept a Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, a SOPEC, community grant, and directing said grant to HAPCAP. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed at committee, the city of Athens, as a member of SOPEC, is eligible to receive community grants from that organization, and in this case, a grant in the amount of $40,000. The city would like to accept and direct it to HAPCAP for the purchase of an electric bus. So we're all very excited about this potential, and this is the, simply the first reading of this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 9921. This is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance. It is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. The ordinance 9921, as discussed during committee, simply has one item, and that is to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the sum of $35,000 to Street Fund 220 to purchase road salt, and to increase the total appropriations by that amount. At the committee meeting, I was requested to provide some additional information about the annual purchase of road salt, and our wonderful interim director of EPW was very quick to respond. In the calendar year 2020, the city used 167 tons of salt. In 2019, now looking at this, I wonder if that's the type of, in 2019, the city used 1,571 tons of salt? I'll have to double-check on that. I'm not sure those two are very different numbers, but we did have a very heavy in snow and ice control season in 2021. The sedine doesn't have totals yet for 2021, but this $35,000 would purchase 600 tons of salt, which would refill the salt storage as we prepare for winter. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. Thanks for that information, too. Any other questions or comments on this particular ordinance?
I would just comment that...
Go ahead. Councilmember McCray.
Thank you. I'd just comment that I appreciate the additional information. I would appreciate that point of clarification about the big discrepancy between those amounts, but fortunately, it's not wintertime yet, so I think we probably have time to get that information.
We do.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to a resolution for first reading. This is R1221. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed in committee and as explained very well by Member Reisner, this is an annual acceptance of the mills for the Athens Township and the Canaan Township due to the city for taking care of the portions of those townships that are in the city of Athens in terms of their roadways. And so this is a continuation of the 2.6 mil tax rate for Athens Township and the 2.4 mil rate for Canaan Township. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. And that does result in revenue of approximately $1 million, $1,777,000 for the city, so...
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 12...
No. It's just our first reading. We need to have three readings on it, because it's not a one-reading resolution. But thank you for asking. And we still have a little bit of time to get this okayed and clarified. All right. Announcements and other business. We will be having committee meetings next week, and so if committee chairs have agenda items to bring forward, if they could let our clerk of council, Debbie Walker, know by Wednesday, so we can get the agenda drafted in time, that would be helpful. And do we have any other announcements from council members or the mayor? Okay. If not, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items that were not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone wanting to speak tonight on any item that was not on the agenda? Okay. If not, what we'll do is we will enter into executive session. No? Oh, we're canceled. Oh, we're not having executive sessions tonight. Thank you very much. I'm glad, I'm glad somebody told me.
Then I move that we adjourn.
As it happens, we can adjourn. That's going to save a lot of time and a roll-call vote.
We can roll-call me adjournment.
But you had the motion to adjourn. And we have a second. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And we are adjourned for the evening at 8:03. Thank you so much for being here.